Welcome to the GATE Show. GATE stands for Groton Advocates for Tax Efficiency. I'm Scott Ahmet, Chairman of GATE. I'm also Representative on the RTM in District 6. GATE was formed when a dozen or so concerned citizens in Groton got together and decided to do something about their local government. GATE was formed as a political action committee to express our issues and to be a source of information to the Groton taxpayers. We felt the electorate needed to know better, the policies, processes, and ongoings of how and why their tax dollars are being used. Our overall mission is to provide a more transparent and informative source to the Groton electorate so that they make more informed decisions on how their tax dollars are being spent. Roseanne?
Hi, I'm Roseanne Katuski, and I would like to welcome you to the GATE Show. The GATE Show came about in order to present the residents of Groton an alternative perspective to tax and spend. Today, we welcome three candidates for Groton Town Council. Karen Morton, currently serving on the Town Council. Bruce Flax, also currently serving on the Town Council. And newcomer Rich Morafsek. It is our hope at GATE that if these individuals are elected to the Town Council, they will work for alternatives to the tax and spend status quo. GATE members have provided questions to our guests in advance regarding town of Groton issues. Scott?
Okay, welcome. The first question I'll ask to each of the three of you. Given the situation with Pfizer, the uncertainty of the sub-base, and the declining grant list, we at GATE believe there is an urgent need to discuss tax policy. Should the town of Groton tax its residents to satisfy the decrease in its revenues, or should it scale back and recalibrate operations to account for this reality? Be specific. Counselor Morton?
I would say it's going to take a combination of a number of things. I definitely, I have always felt that you have, we have to really monitor the way we're spending our tax dollars, and we need to pick and choose and prioritize the things that we budget money for. However, I don't think that that in and of itself is going to be enough. I think with the diminishing tax base in the town, I think it's going to be more important than ever that we attract new business. And that's not going to happen unless we come up with some bold moves. And unfortunately, I think that's going to involve spending money. So I think the difficulty in the coming year is going to be finding some sort of a balance between cutting spending where we can and then finding ways to fund the improvements that we need to make to our infrastructure in order to attract new business.
Can you be a little bit more specific on, say, areas to improve or cut?
Well, I think that there are a number of departments. I have always felt that perhaps the Recreation Department is one area. I know that it's something that the residents really like, but like any family, you know, if you don't have the money to go out for entertainment, then that's one of the first things you give up. I think that I've always felt that our Planning Department is overstaffed. I think it's too large for the size of the town that we have. And I am a big proponent, I tried very hard during the last budget to start the process of consolidating police services, dispatch services, you know, that kind of thing. Unfortunately, the RTM saw things differently and undid all of our efforts, but that's where I would start.
Counselor Flax?
Yeah, I think it's a very difficult question to answer in terms of where the cutting should come from and whether you should balance the, what we do have for revenue to operations and be able to bring, you know, lever, kind of bring it down. You know, I think it's what you're suggesting is to, is to really make the, have the budget come in line with the revenues we're getting, not have it be vice versa, not have the tax rate be set on.
Exactly.
So I think that, but I think that there's, you know, when you're looking at departments and cutting, I think there's certainly room to do that. I think it's very difficult to find, it's difficult to, to come to an agreement with the town operations because the town manager is presenting a budget that he's already cut from the staff and is coming in at numbers that he believes are the best numbers to come in at. And so, so when we start looking at the budget and trying to cut, we did do, as Counselor Morton had said, a substantial amount of cutting that was, ended up being put back in by the RTM. And I think we're going to address that in an upcoming meeting. I think we're going to try to get together with them and see where the communication gaps are and how we can work better together. Not necessarily agree, but at least understand where each of us are coming from because there's, I think there's communication problems. I'm a huge advocate of getting the Groton Long Point, the city, and the town together to discuss police consolidation, public works consolidation, parks and rec consolidation. And all I'm looking for is for a discussion to begin because you can't get anywhere without a discussion. And I don't want to hear, it will never happen, or whatever. I want to sit down and talk about it, and maybe I'll come out of it.
Well, one of the few things that maybe we could start is like using the word combining services, maybe starting with dispatch, as Karen mentioned, would be a good place to start. And maybe it could go from there.
Yeah, I mean, tomato, tomato, you know, I mean, I, if someone has suggested maybe you should call it efficiencies, trying to find efficiencies and stuff, and, you know, it's going to be a tough time in Groton. And it's going to be, you know, there's going to be, there's already, we're going to take a $2 million hit from Pfizer on the tax base, and that money has to come from somewhere. And if we don't start making some big decisions and figuring out how we're going to deal with it, we're going to have, people are going to lose services that they never imagined they were going to lose.
So I know the election's coming, so you're saying get all the parties involved in the table because, and this is what I agree with, having all parties involved that have vested interests, Groton Long Point, the city, the whatnots, and say, look, what do you suggest? And then have the debates, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, again, when you bring it up, the city mayor would say, never going to happen. You know, never going to happen, nope. And that's not what we need.
No.
We need to have a discussion, and it very well is possible that we could say like, my gosh, that's a great point, you know?
But certainly there's other areas in the budget that there can be reductions made. It doesn't need to protect the status quo and increase every single year.
Agreed, agreed.
Mr. Morafsek?
In the present financial climate, we need to look at where we came from, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. And I think the town itself, the operations of the town, they need to be very aggressive in their finding their line item values. They need to go through the budget itself and look at where they can cut, where they can reduce, and present to the, to the Town Council a realistic budget, not something that has been done the previous years and they don't want to reduce any funding. It's got to be realistic. And our times today are tough. Anybody who's going to be in the council will have to govern in areas where possibly they have never gone in before. I think that areas where we need to be aggressive is in our advertising for different commercial establishments in our industrial parks. They're empty, some of these industrial parks, not empty, but there, there's a lot of empty lots in those industrial parks. And they're in good locations. And this needs to be looked at along with the existing businesses that we have in town. What do we do to them? Are we supporting them? Do we buy from Groton? Are we giving the services to local engineering firms and local contractors? Or are we just going out of town for this type of service? I think we need to go to Groton and really look at ourselves and find out what can be done inside the town to help reduce some of the burdens that are put on our spending. There's, there's much to be looked at. Some of these line items that come through need to be reviewed as far as their estimates and their justifications. They, I had heard that a lot of times that the numbers are given because that's what we did last year. And that's not good enough.
Well, it is based on last year's budget.
Last year's, and so we're going to just add another 2%. Well, if I get on the council, I'm going to look at everything. I'm going to look at every penny that they spend because this is the taxpayers' money, and it's very, you know, it's very, I would say, important that we respect their money and don't overspend. There's areas in public works that can be reduced. Those vehicles and trucks that are up there are one of the best fleet that we have in this part of the country.
That's true.
Or this part of the state, I should say. And I see every time a number of trucks on the road with one person in it, and these are, these certainly could be reduced. Some of the vehicles that are used that are driven, there's only one person in it. I think we could cut back some of the vehicles and put people in car pools type system. I'm not sure exactly how many people take the cars home at night, but I think we could look at this.
Thank you.
And there's a lot of areas that can be looked at that I don't think they've even touched.
Okay.
Quick follow-up though, sorry. You mentioned a couple of areas of development that could be quick and easy turnaround. Can you be more specific on those areas?
Well, there's, there's a lot of areas where the commercial establishments in town could be using a lot of assistance from the town itself. Quick turnaround, I'm not sure exactly.
Well, you mentioned we could develop some areas already. I just wanted specific areas.
We have, we have 117 where there's the Mystic Executive Park. And I was up there the other day. I was surprised to see how much space is up there. That would have been a perfect location for that cancer center to go in. It's near a hotel where people could stop and certainly the families could be there while their, their member is being serviced. And also, there's the Pequot Medical Center right there where they could go for a quick checkup before they go to that. That was an ideal spot, and for whatever reason, we lost it, it's sad. But that, that has all, that has all of the utilities that's necessary for, for the park.
The next question is, Bruce touched on it. Building 118 is either coming down or is down. I'm not exactly sure what the status is. And that's $2.3 million in tax revenue that we're going to be losing, we've known about. What are we going to do about it? What is the plan? Do we have a plan in place? Or are we just going to go shake the taxpayer money tree? Karen?
Oh, you were talking to Bruce. I think it's, we're going to have to look, we've known, we've known, of course, that it was going to happen. And again, this goes hand in hand with the need to bring more businesses into town. And I think one of the things that we did is we've coupled, are we in supporting the referendum for Flanders Road? I think a lot of us on the council, I can't speak for everyone, but myself, one of my biggest reasons for supporting that is the, the knowledge that we have got to come up with more of a tax base. And we have this huge industrial area, and it's kind of like which came first, the chicken or the egg? You know, people say, well, you don't want to develop certain areas of town without a guarantee that somebody's going to come in. But they're never going to come in unless you're able to provide them with sewer and water.
That's interesting. But we at GATE don't support the referendum, as you know. And, but if the referendum does pass, we're years down the road to get any possible tax revenue from the $16.1 million we're spending on the referendum. But we've known for at least two years that this building may come down, and we've known at least for a year that it's coming down. So that's not going to help the taxpayers when this goes off the tax rolls in October 1 of 2014, I believe. So what do we do?
We're going to have to be very creative, and we're going to have to be very disciplined in the spending. And it's going to hurt. I mean, there's no two ways about it. Because if we don't have something in place, which we very well may not have, there is only going to be so much that we can ask the taxpayers to come up with, which I think is one of the reasons why I have, for as long as I've been on the council, for the past year, I have tried to be very careful about where we spend our money and what we agree to and the new programs that we put into place. Because ultimately, at some point, you're simply going to have stretched people as far as they can go.
I think they're there.
And I, and I think it's getting close. I mean, certainly the economy is not picking up. All of the experts say we're years away from any real improvement. And I think that, you know, in the very foreseeable future, we're going to have to really be making some, some hard choices. And I'm not afraid to make those choices, but at the same time, I am very dismayed at the idea, we made some really tough choices this budget year and got them all undone. So I don't know, and, and I'm not sure that the taxpayers themselves, they, 10% of the eligible voters turn out to vote in an election. So do they care? I don't know.
Well, just for the record, GATE did support the actions of the Town Council. Okay, Bruce?
I think first off, Counselor Morton makes a great point that only 10% of the tax, the tax bases of the voters aren't voting. What's that? I don't know. It's a low amount, whatever it is. And, and I think it speaks to two things. It speaks to people in the status quo, and there are people of the exact opposite of view who, huh, you know, they see their, a lot of people don't see their tax bill because it goes to their mortgage and they don't, you know, it goes up whatever amount a year. But to your question of Pfizer and the, and the building, I, I agree with, respectfully disagree with you guys, with respect to the referendum for the, and the reason being is because I'm not thinking in terms of five years, or 10 years, or 30 years as paying it off. Hopefully Groton's going to be around for a lot of years, more than that. And so it's, this is a, this is something that we can do in, in 2013 to have, that might affect 2113 and 2213.
But I think my question was, the $2.3 million coming off now?
Right, well, I get it, so, understood. So to take $2.2 or $2.3 million off the budget in one budget year is a huge challenge. And, you know, I would say that, you know, the, the big ticket items are the, are the projects that we do, and the ones that are, that are brought through that are over a half a million, I believe, or, I think it's over a half a million for a CIP project. And so that's where, to me, are the biggest hits that you could take. Because if you're going to, you know, the budget itself is, don't quote me on this, it's like 80% salary in the town operations budget and 20% oper, you know, operations. So now you're looking at taking away, you know, layoffs and removing people, removing layers, and that's certainly a possibility, but you're never going to get to $2.2 million doing that. You're not going to be able, you know, and as far as the operational budgets go, again, you can cut out pens and pencils, you can cut out your car, you know, however you're going to do it, but still, it's, it's difficult to get to $2.2 million.
It's going to have to be staff.
Right, it's going to, exactly. So I'm suggesting that, you know, if, if that's the direction we want to take, then we need to, it really needs to be looked at now, and I'm sure it will be brought up at Monday's RTM council meeting. And I also want to say that there's things to me that, that we look at and was a big stickling point for me that were, to me, relatively big ticket items, $25,000, $50,000, and that's consultants. And to me, that's something that the town, we have to look into. I'm tired of the town manager saying it's okay for the IT department to hire a $50,000 consultant to tell them what kind of computer system they need. That's why you have people in the IT department. They're supposed to have that knowledge, and I think they're selling those people short by not allowing them to do that. I know in my business, I do RFPs all the time myself.
Sure.
So I think that's one thing that we should be looking at because I'm sure it's a good 250.
And you did bring that up at the last budget session.
Yes.
And I did model what you said at the RTM.
Yes.
To try to bring the point home, but it didn't work.
No.
Okay.
Okay, the, certainly the $2.3 million is, was a big hit in our, in our budget, but that wasn't the only one, the only hit that we took. We lost four businesses, and we lost something like 2,100 jobs since 2011. And this certainly put a tremendous strain on our system. What we need to do is we need to stretch out our arms and look for, look for new, new businesses. We have to attract businesses like, like boats and marine dealers, aviation part manufacturers. We need to, need to apply the state and federal grants so that we can best utilize our, our miles of waterfront that we have affecting, without affecting the environment. Groton is surrounded by water, and we're not capitalizing on this. There's areas that can be looked at, like I mentioned just before, the, the airport. The airport executive park up there certainly can use small businesses that make airport parts and things that are, that are in that type of industry. The water, we could, with a federal grant or a state grant, we could possibly expand a pier somewhere and have a fishing fleet, sell, sell commercial fish like they do in Stonington, and, and welcome other industries that would not affect the, our land usage and our environment. There's areas that we need to look at that are, besides reducing staff and, and cutting back things that maybe are precious to the services of the town. Certain things have to be cut back, there's no doubt. But we need to cut back smartly, and I think this is, have to be something that has to be looked at in the next council.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Town Council has supported and sent two referendums to the voters this November 5th. We at GATE, as we said, do not support these referendums. Should a $3.8 million police station improvement, that's total with interest and principal, should this project fail, please speak to the possibility of completing police station upgrades in stages through either capital improvement process or in accordance with the budget process? And is all of that really needed? Counselor Morton?
I would not have supported the improvements to the police station if I didn't feel that they were, were necessary. I know the council discussed initially doing it piecemeal, maybe breaking it down into projects.
Was this yearly?
Yes. When, when we were deciding on what to do. And it was decided that it would be very difficult to try to figure out because all of the things that are needed are, are important. I mean, the building is 36 years old, so like any building, the way you use the building, the types of things that you have to do, change over time. The boiler system in the police station is on its last leg. It's rusting out. It's, they're having continual problems with it. If it isn't replaced soon, what's going to happen is it's going to conk out entirely, and you know it'll do, it'll happen in the middle of winter on a weekend, you know? So ultimately, that's got to be replaced. The prisoner cell area needs to be remodeled because up until recently, 16 and 17-year-old juveniles were considered adults and were allowed to be placed into cells with adults. They are now categorized as juveniles, and the law now says they have to be segregated out. So they need to revamp the prisoner cell area. You have the Sally Port, which is being enlarged to make it safer for the officers when they are bringing in prisoners. I mean, all of these things, you know, we felt were important, and rather than piecemealing it out over a period of time, and they're all things that are necessary now for the safety of the people who work in the police station and the officers themselves, they need to be done now. It can't be put off.
One, one way to look at it is, it's a whole laundry list of expensive items that maybe we don't need the carport, maybe we don't need to pave the parking lot. And just because the building is old, I don't really think that qualifies for an $8 million, $8 million referendum. And another thing about this that's disturbing is it's just another part of the town practice of taking capital improvement projects off budget into referendums. We saw that with the road ordinance, and GATE didn't support the road ordinance either. You know, this should be a capital improvement project in stages like you suggested. That's just the opinion of GATE. Unfortunately, the voters will decide, or fortunately, the voters will decide, you know?
Right. I would say though, I think my concern, as far as I believe personally, that these things are all needed and they're needed now. My concern with having it be part of the budget process is, just like we felt Noang School was vitally important, the building needs to come down, it's costing us money, it needs to come down, and the area needs to be repaved. We put money into a CIP for that so that we could get that taken care of? RTM decided it wasn't needed and cut it. If you start piecemealing out these improvements on the police station and they get cut, what happens?
I don't mind the referendum for the police station, but there are certain things that I agree to disagree that, that aren't essential. The things I thought were essential because we, all the RTM members got a chance to tour the police station. It is an older building, it's not falling down.
Certainly.
The roof is definitely needed. I'm in the engineering field, boiler, the boiler, there's two in there, one's working, one's not. So they need to do the boiler. And the cameras, cameras are, I was shocked.
VCR.
Yeah, yeah, the cameras, you know, so there is a need there. The problem is, in Groton, we have a history of putting out, say, Thame Street, for instance. That went out initially, $10 million. It failed because it was too extravagant. I think we need to look even closer at these projects because we can do with a little bit less, I think. That's just my opinion. I'd done a lot of research, we went on tours and everything. So I think that we can tighten our belts just a little bit more on that project. That's why we really don't support that. Counselor Flax, your opinion?
Well, I took the tour. I felt what they were saying, they made a lot of sense. I did not support the roads because I agreed that it's something that should remain in the budget. And, and for so many reasons, which we, I don't think we should get into there, namely the public work, nevermind. So I'll get all worked up. But as far as police goes, I do, we did, you know, whenever we have these referendums, I always suggest that we look at offering two, you know, one higher and one lower. And the town manager always says, no, because, I think he says like, the less one will always win, right? Which is, you know, maybe that's the way it should be. But they, so we end up doing it, and then we end up waiting eight months, and then we end up doing it again.
It's smaller.
It's a cleaner or smaller, whatever you want to call it, and end up passing. So am I for looking at it and saying, maybe we could take this, this, and this out of it and offer something lower? Absolutely. But I do know that as an overall project, there are definitely things that need to be done.
Because we were told it was all or nothing.
But that's the problem.
Right, but that's, but that's, you know, and I think, you know, and to defend the town manager, I think he's saying, it's human nature, you always go for the lower, so you need to put it out there, and then you need, and it needs to go to a vote, and then it needs to go back, go to a vote. So I, I can understand where he's coming from, I think I disagree, I think I'd rather, in, in, in the name of saving time.
And money, referendums cost money.
Right, exactly. I would rather put out two and let people debate that.
Interesting.
Interesting.
Not in today's climate. I think the referendum for the police should be scrapped. They, that's like circumventing the system, the policies that are, that have been established. You don't take a bunch of CIP projects and then put them together and say, well, this is what we got to do. We don't got to do anything like that. What we ought to do is look at the CIP project individually on their own merit and then, and then look at, and see what can be done. As far as the boiler goes, I've known buildings that had boilers that were hundreds of, you know, 100 years old plus. I am not sure if the, you know, if it's the tubes that are bad or it's the, the operational controls of the boiler, but they can be fixed. They don't have to be, that boiler doesn't have to be completely replaced. I don't know if it's been inspected by a boiler.
Technician?
No, the Hartford Boiler Group, but that's what's needed.
Well, you'd like to, you'd like to trust enough in the public works or whatever that they did. I mean, you'd like to think that, that they have.
I've seen one where they didn't let me in though.
Yeah, well.
Because they blocked.
He wanted to.
And I know boilers, so I couldn't get in.
Okay, since we already did a lot with this, I'm just going to skip over this next, to go to this next question.
Okay.
Okay. Rich?
Yeah.
For the last eight years, your interest has been the Groton Long Point Public Works Department. When on the town council, will it be difficult for you to separate yourself and consider the town of Groton in its entirety?
Okay. First, I want to just make the clarification, Groton Long Point, like the city, is in the town.
Right.
We are all part of the town.
Right.
To divorce myself from Groton Long Point's present position of, as Public Works Director, would not be difficult for me because, like most projects that I've been on in the last 30 years, working overseas with an international oil company, I went from project to project. I met new people, new friends, and got new experiences. And so, to move from one job, so to speak, or one position in the town to another position would not be difficult. I hold my allegiance to the town. I live in Groton Long Point.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to end the show with a statement from each of our guests. Councilor Morton, would you like to go first? Closing statement?
That was unexpected. I just, I think, I'm very concerned going forward. I think it's going to be a hard year. I think there's going to be a lot of challenges facing the town. I would like to see the town as a whole, the city of Groton, the town of Groton, Groton Long Point, all the subdivisions. I'd like to see us all pulling together as a cohesive unit, as Groton in its entirety. Because I think one of the most damaging things that could possibly happen to this town is for us to become fractured into groups or subdivisions and where we end up working against each other rather than together. I think we need to unite under a common goal, and that is, you know, keeping Groton alive and well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Flack?
I've got two words. Unify Groton. It's my new mantra. I think my closing statement is that I think moving forward, we need to figure out how to mend fences and be able to have discussions and remain adults and talk. And I keep talking about December 30th, but I think that's an important date because the council's going to get together with the RTM and try to figure out a few things. And I think a lot of the things, a lot of places that the council may be coming from is that in the budget process, we go through every department, and then we make our recommendations, and then it goes to the RTM. And the RTM gets into their committees, which people aren't going to like this. I think five are headed by city residents. And then, they get into their committees.
It's true.
It's true. Just saying. And then, they make, they kind of talk about it. And they have people down on them, like the, you know, when they're talking about the city, the mayor will come in and the police chief will come in and they'll, you know, kind of have that discussion. And then, they get into the big room and they end up, it seems like the committee head speaks, and then RTM members ask questions, and then they vote. And I don't, I want to investigate how people process information and what they're listening to and what they're not listening to. And, you know, one thing I point to is the question that you asked, Roseanne, was, you know, how's $233,000 going to compromise public safety? And the fire chiefs, I'm sorry, the police chief said, we're going to have to shut the lights off in the police station. And it went, I can't imagine that not one person in the RTM spoke up, said, are you kidding me? Like, you're going to shut the light? That's your answer? You're going to shut the lights off? So, I'm interested to find out, to mend some fences there, to find out and to make sure that people, whether you agree with me, or you, or Rich, or Karen. Karen? I'm getting old. Whether they disagree, they need to come to the table and talk and be big people. You know, none of this, I'm not going to talk to you, or I'm not going to shake your hand, or I'm not going to be nice to you because I didn't like what you said. If that's the way you're going to be, you got to go because we need to have open discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
My goal is to ensure that Groton becomes an affordable place to live and an affordable place to raise your children here with an outstanding educational system. I think in the past, we forgot what our objectives were here. We saw that our taxes has gone from 55% to 60 to the budget system. And we need to hold this down. I see a lot of my neighbors moving down to Florida to escape some of the taxes that the state will take from them. And then, so, they're saving on their own. As far as unification of the town, that may come someday. But what we need to do is stop pitting one group against another. And I see this all the time. I hear it constantly about what we ought to do, what we should do. We have so many other problems in the town that we need to look at. We need to address some of these issues that come up frequently, but not keep plugging away at, let's consolidate, let's consolidate. We had a police study. And the police study, the draft of the police study indicated that the larger police department would only dilute certain police functions.
That's debatable. That's another show, okay?
Yeah. But I think, but that's a major issue that causes people to pit one group against the other. And also, the taxes. Some areas are high taxed, whereas others aren't. And we're working on issues in that area. But I think overall, we need to set up dialogue among all the groups. I suggest that the town council, together, meet with all of the elected officials of the fire districts and the subdivisions, not to talk about budget process, but to talk about items that are very common to each one of the groups. That could be, maybe we can find some type of areas where we can share experiences or we will understand why they're asking for certain things. For instance, if everybody knew about what was going on in the school system or the, not the, the Noang School System, maybe he would have gotten more support. I don't know. I don't know if that was even a good idea. But certainly, none of us knew. I didn't, you know, know about it until it was brought up at the last minute. But I think unification is, will come, but not as soon as maybe Counselor Flack expects.
Thank you.
It's a good goal. I'd like to thank all of our watchers and viewers for watching. I'd like to thank our guests and to remember to open the gate to transparency.